Welcome to today's city council meeting, Monday, February 12th, 2024. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please, uh, please stand for the invocation by Mr. Corners from the Sirius First Baptist Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our heavenly father, we know that you are pleased if we are a grateful people. We give thanks to you tonight for this community in which we live. We thank you for the freedom to gather, to do business of series. We thank you for the freedom to express ourselves freely in this society, with the freedom to pray publicly, the freedom to gather as a local community and govern ourselves at the local level. Bless this council and all those that support them as they serve the city. Bless our mayor, as he provides leadership and guidance to us. Bless the leaders of our police department and our sheriff's department as they oversee our protection and safety, watch over our law enforcement officers as they serve, give them safety and wisdom and love for our community. Give strength and efficiency to our firefighters that they care for us in our greatest times of danger. Bless our fire chief and his staff as they serve and protect us and our property. We remember the word, the Old Testament psalmist. Unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain to build it. Unless the Lord guards the city, the watchman keeps awake in vain. Help us then as a community to learn to consider you, your word, your ways, and all we do. Bless, we miss your heavenly blessing. Pray these things in the name of the only Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to our presentation, this is the Black History Month proclamation. Accepting this proclamation tonight will be Samuel White from the National Association of Color People from Modesto, Stanislas Chapter. Um, if the city council could please go to the front podium so we can go ahead and start this proclamation? And if I could also have Samuel, please stand there with us. Is everybody here? Okay. Declaring February 2024 as Black History Black History Month has been officially celebrated in the United States since 1976 in order to promote the cultural, economic, political, and social contributions made by our black community to help build this great nation. Whereas in 2024, national theme for the observance focus on African American and the arts, which recognizes the contributions of African Americans have made towards visual in the performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, agricultural, culinary, and, and other forms of cultural expressions. And whereas the city of Series is committed to equity and inclusion and continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all residents, past, present, and future are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community and country. Therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Series and urges all our residents to commit to working towards the ideals and equality, freedoms, unity, and the abundance of opportunities of that of our country represents. Congratulations.
Let's all get together and take. On behalf of the NAACP, I'm the legal chairperson. Thank you. City, Siri, all that you've done. You know, time. The equity, though that you're moving in the same direction. Want to take this from the just to say thank you. Law enforcement officers, I know I've driven a black and white before, so I know how it goes. So we thank you guys also for your service. Thank you, the city of Siri, California. Thank you very much, so kindly. Smile down, teaching everyone that the wind be at your back, sun on your face. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to citizens' communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution 2007-106, for expression of non-agenda items. Masters, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside of the chambers doors. And we'll begin with any in-person comment. Is there anybody here who would like to make a comment? This is your time. Please step into the podium and state your name.
Dean Yackley, Siri. City has a website. There's quite a few departments and stuff. Uh, probably a lot of stuff people don't know how to interpret when they look at it. I was wondering if the city couldn't arrange where there's, uh, on the city website, uh, departments where they tell us what they can and what's going on in each department in the city. So the citizens, the ones that go to the internet or, you know, maybe the newspaper. It's like a lot of people use internet and they don't react, but they do read. Would it be possible to get input like every month or a few weeks? Probably a month would be the best on, uh, what's going on in each department, whether it's police department, public works, parks and recreation. You know, give people an idea so they don't have to search for anything. It's right there in front of them, you know? I'm sure there's some, especially the police department, they probably wouldn't be able to reveal too much, but they could tell about the crime in the area. Uh, you know, maybe something from the fire department code enforcement. So people are aware of what's going on because I think a lot of people just don't know. They probably, you know, kind of go to the site and not participate, but they might participate in a website or the city website. It gives them information on each department, what's happening. Where there's the streets, you know, the parks, what's happening in the parks, you know? Like now we got a new security company going in and, and we could probably brief the community on what's going on with parks and safety and stuff like that. Just to keep the community informed. Like I said, a lot of people probably won't use it. They don't use the newspaper that much, but at least it's there for those of us that what's going on. Thank you.
Next person.
Uh, Dave Pratt of Siri's. Uh, it was interesting when we had the group meeting with the, uh, planning and council and all those talking about what, what they want, what you want to talk about later, later on. And lucky for us, uh, we get a chance to talk five minutes or against a lot of that stuff. A couple items I, I talked about at the planning commission, I'd like to. One of them is signs. A-frame signs were banned because they're not consistent and they're blocking a lot of the sidewalks. And as far, as far as the other signs, banners and the flags and stuff, uh, they were only allowed for new businesses for a part period of time and they're supposed to take those down and they're not. Uh, because it was that the council banned those because they're a distraction of to motorists. They didn't want people spending their time looking at all these banners and such. Uh, we get enough accidents as it is. Another one, one, uh, that was brought up, about bringing in a RV center in Siri. And I can't understand when we got one super center right down the road and that's constantly growing. Every time I pass by, it seems like it's getting bigger. And then there's two or three, uh, the ones that are selling, uh, repos and, and use RVs. I don't feel that we really need something like that in Siri's. My last thing is I need to have you guys get your gopher guys down to the dog park and do something about the gophers. The big dogs are tearing up, tearing up the park. And then I need to have you repair them. It's getting a lot of the smaller, the holes are being covered up by overgrowth of, of these some of the lot. And I've stepped in a few of them when I'm out there playing with the, with my dog. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak? This is your opportunity. Seeing none? Is there any emails?
No emails were received.
Okay, thank you very much. The public period is now closed. Moving on, there is no appointments and commissions. Is there any conflicts of interest from any of the council members? Seeing none? Let's move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be acted, enacted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council that would like to pull an item for consent?
Number five, Mayor.
Number five. Anything else? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to pull, pull an item? Yes, sir. Number thirteen. Okay. I bring this back for a motion.
Make a motion to approve items one through four, six through twelve, fourteen and fifteen of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, item number five, that's yours, Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Shannon, uh, who works as our finance director for a quick reply that she did today when I asked the question about the split for the, uh, fire protection that we pay city of Modesto. She was Johnny on the spot, came back with the numbers. But the question I have, however, is, uh, she mentioned it to be seventy, thirty percent split, meaning that the month of January, uh, was a hundred and eighty-five thousand out of Measure H. Um, Measure H budget, on the other hand, indicates that their money that comes from Measure H should be equivalent to seven firefighters. Last year, the, the split was, uh, a hundred and fifty-five thousand came from Measure H each month. So I, I'm just bringing that to really a council or city manager's attention that there, there's conflicting information about how that split should take place. But again, I want to thank Shannon for, for quick reply. And I understand that the information that she provided is the information that was provided to her. It's just that there is a conflict between, uh, a percentage of the growth and the cost of seven full-time firefighters. Unless, of course, the seven full-time firefighter cost increased over thirty thousand dollars from last year to this, maybe that's the case. But again, thank you, Shannon, for your very quick reply. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Members in the audience, comments or questions on this item? Okay. Bring this back for a motion.
Make a motion to accept item five of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to item number thirteen. So Yackley, go ahead. This resolution is approving the submission of an application to the Office of Traffic Safety for Special Traffic Enforcement Programs, State Grant.
Yeah, Dean Yackley, Siri. Didn't get to the staff report to see the extension of what this entails on thirteen. Uh, but I think myself and probably again, people from the city might want to know about it. So a better person than, shall we call you Chief Perry? All right. Chief Chris Perry could answer thirteen for me and maybe let the people watching behind us know what's going on with that. Thank you.
If you could give us a brief overview of the program.
I, I can certainly do that.
The grant, should I say?
Yep. So this, uh, this item is the approval, um, to submit the application for the grant, just to submit it, so it's not to get the grant. It's just approving us, um, to, to submit the application. But what the grant entails is it entails, uh, funds through the Office of Traffic Safety to allow us to do special enforcement activities which typically occur on overtime, such as DUI checkpoints and DUI saturation patrols, um, uh, distracted driving patrols, uh, so cell phone type violations, seatbelt violations. Um, and, uh, and then it also, a lot of times, um, for us submitting the grant, we're also allowed to put in for certain specialized equipment that comes with this grant. Um, so, um, I think in this grant, uh, we may be asking for a new traffic enforcement vehicle. And this stuff is all fully funded through the state, uh, if approved.
So on the end part, that's everything's great, uh, and people are informed now. Uh, is this something that comes along every year or certain amount of years? Is it's only in a grant form?
Yes. Yes, that is correct. Um, sometimes the grant, um, is good for maybe two years, uh, but typically it's a year-long grant.
Like some grants, if you don't take that, I don't know who department in California want a grant. If they don't take that, then when the grant comes again, it's harder to take it.
Uh, sometimes, uh, that, that could be the case. That's more so the case when they award us the grant and then we don't.
Oh.
We don't do, we don't do the enforcement activities that we've outlined that we're gonna do. So if we say, hey, we're asking for this money because we want to do five DUI checkpoints and then we only do two, that doesn't sit well with them when we try to reapply for a following year.
Thanks for their information. Every time we have a question, you get an answer and people are informed and that's what we want. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Chief.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions or comments, an audience? Council members? Okay, I bring this back for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item thirteen of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez. Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Siri's five zero.
I just wanted to mention that, uh, Mr. Casey, this item in particular, you have to step out for your conflict of interest. Unfinished business. For the appeal, this is the second, this is the second hearing. You stepped out last time. Mr. Casey, this is, this, this. But Nubia, can you please? Can you remind him?
Yes, so if I remember correctly, the they, they were.
My, my line. So they, they were combined together, the car wash and the gas station.
Right.
They, they were one unit. And I had a conflict car wash. Could I excuse myself from this?
Well. My, my recollection is that your recusal on that was, um, because of an interested party in the car wash, but the car wash was part of the larger project that was subject to the appeal. And so you didn't take part of the appeal itself. This is a continuation of that discussion. And so to maintain that, that consistency, since you didn't take part in the appeal, this is a decision on the appeal, so.
Oh, I should excuse myself?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, council member.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Resolution number twenty-two-four, approving an appeal and modifying the City of Siri's Planning Commission Resolution, PC twenty-three, twenty-six, for the conditional use permit application, number twenty-three, eighteen, to develop a gas station and convenience store at twelve hundred East Whitmore Avenue, APN zero eighty-six dash zero sixteen dash zero seventy-seven. Nubia?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a resolution and accompanying modification to the Planning Commission's resolution for approval of this project. As you will remember at your last meeting, you did hold a public hearing on the appeal regarding this project. And based off of the direction that we received from council, we have prepared a modification to the Planning Commission's approval of the project. Uh, to recap, um, the project, and we just, just referenced this for benefit of council member Casey, who recused himself on the item, was a combination of a gas station, a car wash and, um, associated projects. And the council's wish was to bring back an action that would invalidate or remove the approval of the gas station, allowing the car wash aspect of the project to move forward. And so that is what's before you tonight. The resolution for your consideration does lay out several grounds for the council's direction and decision based off of what we heard at your last council meeting. But primarily, it's predicated off of inconsistencies with the general plan, potential oversaturation of one particular use within the area, concerns with it conflicting with, um, provisions in the current zoning code about locations of, of, um, gas stations, um, and, and related code sections. So the exhibit or the attachment to the resolution is in red line for you to see where the project, um, is stricken. The car wash, I mean, the, excuse me, the gas station aspects of the project have been stricken. So if you approve the resolution tonight, it will uphold the appeal as presented by the appellant, but it will be for the grounds that the council established. And the municipal code provides that you have the ability as the final decision makers to craft the decision in the way that, the best way that you deem fit, um, for the project and the community. And so again, the resolution contains findings related to that. And what will happen after this, if the council approves it, this result, the Planning Commission's resolution will be finalized. So there won't be red lines, but there will be, will remove all the references to the, the gas station. And that will be the final approval for that project. And that's what will be recorded against the property. And, um, again, depending on what the, the applicant wishes to do, they'll continue working with staff, uh, to address any aspects of the, the remaining approved part of the project. So with that, I can answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Dubia. Uh, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Was there any emails? Okay. That being said, the public hearing is now closed. I'll bring this item back for this council for discussion. Is there any comments or questions from the council? Mr. Silvera, go ahead.
Nubia, just to clarify, no vote on this resolution tonight will have no effect on whether they can build the car wash or not.
That's correct. As we discussed before, that's essentially a permitted use and.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions?
Okay. I'll make a, a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-two-four dash next in line, approving the appeal, modifying the City of Siri's Planning Commission's Resolution, PC twenty-three, twenty-six, for the conditional use permit application, number twenty-three, eighteen, to develop a gas station and convenience store at twelve hundred East Whitmore Avenue.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey abstained. Councilmember Vera.
I support the appeal.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
No.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries three, one with one intention.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to new business. Resolu-, Resolution number twenty-two-four, ratifying the appointment of Christopher Perry to the position of police chief, approving an appointment agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute this agreement. Doug?
Mr. Mayor and council members, as you know, the chief of police position has been vacant since January sixth, twenty-twenty-four. After twenty-seven years of dedicated service, interim chief Christopher Perry is ready to fill this next step. He has certain various assignments and worked his way through the traditional ranks of law enforcement. I recall had been a police chief since, uh, March first of twenty-nineteen and has since retired. Chief Collins appointed Christopher Perry as captain on January eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and that was soon after Chief Collins took over. Um, after careful and thorough consideration of the alternatives, fulfilling the critically important role, it is clear the obvious and best choice for the Siri, City of Siri's is Christopher Perry, her chief of police. Attached to this contract for your review.
Thank you very much, Doug. I appreciate that. We now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? This is now the time. Please step to the podium.
We had this conversation before, not too long ago. Congratulations. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I bring this back. Is there any emails, actually?
No emails.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Bring this back to the council for discussion questions.
First, I just want to say congratulations, sir. Uh, I think you're a phenomenal person, a great role model, very proud to know you, uh, for my kids to be around you. So I look forward to, uh, making the motion to approve promoting Captain Perry to chief.
Second.
We get a roll call, please. Oh, wait, Mr. Casey had a light on and we'll just hold that motion and that second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I was, uh, expecting to have some input. I thought the whole council would have input on the hiring process to police chief. I know that, uh, council really only has, uh, I guess, authority, permission to hire city manager and the city attorney. City manager hires the rest of the people. But I was still expected, I was expecting to have some input. And I was very surprised at a service club meeting in January, when the councilperson, uh, Daniel Martinez introduced Captain Perry as our new police chief and that we were. And that we would be voting approving on the twelfth of February, and that there would be a ceremony on thirteenth of February. It's not so much that I'm disappointed in having Captain Perry, our new police chief. I just think that the process was flawed. Uh there should have been at least some discussion at a possession. Uh you know, maybe, maybe we should have asked the other fine police officers in our unit if they would be interested in applying for the job. So it's the process that I find difficult to approve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that at that meeting, I called him acting chief. Uh I referenced him like I would when Doug was acting city manager calling acting. Just want to make sure I mention that.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four, one.
Congratulations, chief. Well deserved. Thank you. Just know you have a, you have the community rallying behind you, as I can tell, and your fellow officers. They all showed up on the wrong date, but I'm glad you're here. What I meant by that was tomorrow is your actual swearing in. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Moving on. Item, item number eighteen, ratifying the appointment of Michelle Beltrane to the position of director of engineering services city manager. Excuse city manager, city engineering. My apologies. It is on my day. Approving an employment agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. This goes to the city manager.
And his first name is Michael.
Yeah, don't eat, don't eat, don't get any ideas, Michelle.
Anyway, Mr. Mayor and council members, the position has been vacant since the abrupt resignation of Kevin Wall on January eighth, twenty twenty four. Staff immediately began a search and opened a recruitment for the position, and staff received three applicants that exceeded the requirements for the position. Any reviews were held on January thirtieth with the candidates and the panel representatives of the city. After careful and thorough consideration of all candidates for the critically important role, the panel made a unanimous decision that Mr. Beltran should be offered the position. Mr. Beltran brings eighteen years of experience in the engineering field, and he has both private and governmental experience as an engineer. He is recently the director of engineering for the city of Merced. While the while in Merced, Mr. Beltran was responsible for the staff of twelve and worked on Highway fifty nine project, Merced Airport Terminal, and many other projects. Um currently, Mr. Beltran has the necessary skills, knowledge, and comprehensive understanding of the city government, has extensive city engineer experience, and will build a cohesive cohesive team around uh around him. The position is included in the current budget, therefore, there is no fiscal impact associated with the appointment attached to this contract for review. And Mr. Beltran is on um Zoom tonight if any questions for him.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Is there any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. I bring this item back for the council for discussion, comments or questions.
I'll make a motion to uh approve item number twenty. I'm sorry, eighteen. I apologize. Looking at the wrong number, eighteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. I think they're on Zoom. You want to say something?
Mayor, we do have someone with their hand up on Zoom. Um this time, we do not allow public comment.
We do not allow public comments. Okay, moving on to council referrals. Um item number nineteen, schedule a special city council meeting on Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty four, in lieu of the council regular city council meeting on Monday, twenty seventh, May twenty seven, twenty twenty four, which is Memorial Day. And this item has been requested by council member Casey. Go ahead, sir. Yes, this is one of your referrals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important that, that you know, this is close to the end of the year for our budgeting. And it's important, we, last year, you know, we we had to miss a couple of meetings because of out of town meetings. I think it's important not to miss any meetings uh in May. Uh also, just as a matter of information, you know, Memorial Day was restarted by uh freed slaves and they they did the graves of both the Union and Confederate soldiers, and the very Memorial Day parade was in Charleston, North Carolina. But at any rate, I I think it's important that we not miss any days in May. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment or question on this item? Please raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor John Warren, resident city of Series. I think both number nineteen and both number twenty had received careful consideration from the council. Because sometimes at the end of the year, as in this past year, the city operated with less than one meeting for public to come and express anything that they might need to speak before the council. So having two meetings a month is really an important thing. And if it's scheduled early in the year, such as now in February, then there won't be a rush and calendars won't be full, and other things will not have been scheduled on those particular dates because they're already in the calendar. So I think this is a good time to schedule those meetings for uh two a month as as should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else I'd like to make a comment or questions on this item? Seeing none, I bring this back to council for any comments or questions. Was Linda?
Um I'm supportive of this idea moving forward, especially the month of May when we're dealing with budget issues or approaching the budget. I think it's important. If those have not been addressed, we have an extra meeting to address some of these grants or last minute budget amendments before we the union negotiations. On that, so I'm supportive of going with these two.
Any additional comments or questions? All right, Mr. Casey, you want a motion? Oh, you do have a question? Go ahead, sir.
I was just gonna say that I agree as well. We already cancel one at the end of the year, so no need to cancel an additional two. Lumping, uh I would I would be okay with lumping eighteen or nineteen and twenty together, since it's the same issue, just two different meetings. Or do we need to vote separately on both?
Think we need to go separately.
Then I would make a, or do we need to make a motion on this? It's just a referral?
If I may, uh I believe that you just come to a consensus, and then staff will bring back a staff report at a future council meeting to move those dates.
For item number nineteen, we have consensus of yes. Yes, okay. And then we'll move on to item number twenty. Do you want, go ahead, Mr. Casey, the item is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh as Mr. Warren mentioned earlier, you know, the it's important uh that we meet at least twice a month, and uh again, both of these days are very close to my heart because they they deal with the the brave soldiers that uh saved our country and made it what it is today. Uh so again, I I wish that we would consider changing the date to November twelfth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring this item back to the public. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, there was no emails. Bring this back to council for consensus. My right, two thumbs up, my left. Martinez, okay, there you go. You have direction. Okay. You got it? Alan? You got it? Okay, cool. Okay, moving on to reports. I have no reports. Does any council members have any reports? Rose Linda?
Just somewhat quick. Um the San Luis homeless association is meeting, our alliance again for the San Luis County Homeless Alliance is meeting um this week, so I look forward to bringing forward to some of the ideas that we've had here, such as the hot team that um now Chief Perry has brought forward to us that idea. I'd like to get in county buy-in on that. Um as for economic development, been working with Julian. He is my go-to man right now when it comes to working with small businesses that are struggling, as well as some upcoming events that are coming um forward. So if there are small businesses, whether you've started or thinking about it, or you're already in the process and they're just kind of wanting to know the next step, please reach out. We're happy to work with you. Um as for the economic development, I know that's been delayed. Our meeting was scheduled uh for next week. It's been postponed uh due to ongoing SIDS discussion regarding our county economic developments. Um that meeting is going to go forward with the county supervisors, so if there are comments or input on that, please um look forward to the county supervisor board meeting. And then lastly, we're having our community housing meeting tomorrow at four thirty here in this building. I hope as many of you can come out to talk about how we should be utilizing our home and our C D V G funds. Um I don't know how many of you have already heard about it, but I'd sure like to get your input on how we should be utilizing the funds here in this county. Thank you, or in the city.
Thank you. Any other council members? Okay, city manager? City manager, you have nothing? City attorney?
I think this evening.
Anything from the department heads? We have one over there and two, so we have two today. You first.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um I'd like to introduce Sonia Ledesma. She is our new deputy finance director.
Welcome. Sam?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh just I I have a couple of things I would like to share with the with all with all of you. Um first of uh series uh uh Free Community Disposal Day uh was held on Saturday, the third um at River Bluff Regional Park from eight AM to eleven forty-five PM. Thank you to uh the series PD for helping out uh with uh with directing uh directing vehicles and traffic. That was a great help on your staff. Calling out Chief Perry. Uh and also uh public work, uh staff also stepped in and helped out through this process, including Joey Chavez. Thank you, Joey. Um I just want to like to uh to give you some totals. Uh we had a total of five hundred eighty vehicles uh disposed of large items and appliances for free, for free at the event. Uh we had um two hundred and forty-seven pounds of computer towers that was disposed, four thousand two hundred and eight pounds of flat screens and TVs, six hundred and twenty-five pound uh pounds of printers, two hundred eighty-two pounds of computer monitors, fifty-two ninety-eight pounds, five thousand two hundred and ninety-eight pounds of miscellaneous e-waste, and two hundred forty-nine mattresses. That was approximately that number, and also nine hundred uh tires that were disposed that day. So the event went really successful. Uh we didn't have any issues. Uh weather was great, and uh it was it was a good way to set success. I'm hoping to uh do it next year, too. This this time around was funded by Caltrans. I don't know that um the funding is going to be available for next year. But we're um as far as uh the city, we might, I might put it in as a as a budget for next year. So uh definitely with your approval. Uh also, my second item on the list is the uh 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 last weekend, we had a storm event. Uh from the street division uh side, they responded to five trees that were falling down due to uh to the wind, strong wind that uh fell down. Uh the trees were cut and disposed, uh and staff was also addressing standing waters in areas that normally floods. As far as Parks Division, also, they responded to twelve trees that have fallen due to the due to the wind. And that they also cut the trees and remove them, so uh I I get the kudos to the staff. I mean, they they work long, long hours. Uh doesn't matter what conditions uh the weather is in, they they respond to any emergencies, so I I have a really good staff. I'm really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I don't think that I see, are you adding something? Chris, uh go ahead, Mr. Perry. Chief?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager. I just wanted to uh thank you this evening for your support on the vote uh takeover as the police chief. I look forward to um to the opportunity. And I also wanted to thank everybody tonight, the audience that showed up uh to support uh me in that endeavor as well. And a lot of, a lot of people when I look out there, friends and family uh of this community for a long time, and I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. I look forward to uh leading these uh fine men and women in this department and working with all of you guys in the future. Talk tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Rose Linda, you said you had some extras?
I don't.
Um I just wanted to kind of comment on what um Sam had said regarding Public Works. I know I put a couple because I was out in the community, and I did appreciate because you, when the tree fell down in Don Pedro Park, you cone out the area, the large hole from the large tree that fell. And you guys were out there within a few days, and I appreciate you doing that because there's a lot of kids that go through. Um even keeping the streets dry. When I left work one morning about five thirty, I see the truck out there draining the water on Whitmore Laker. Appreciate that because getting up there in the morning is difficult, especially on cold rainy days. Um so I appreciate your team doing everything they could um within their power to keep the city safe.
Thank you, and I don't think the county supervisor here is today. So move on. We'll now adjourn this meeting and go to a closed session for a conference with the labors. Negotiations, California Code five, four, nine, five, seven, agency designated representative is city manager. Douglas D. Dunkford, employer organizations are serious police office association, first line supervisors, confidential bargaining group, laborers, international union of North America, Launa, mid managers bargaining group, and public safety managers. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned. See you in none. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.